All right, if I didn't have your attention. Today's October the 4th, 2021. At 5:45 PM, we'll start the public meeting for presentation and discussion on changing the trash fee from $12 a month to $15 a month and discontinuing the use of the furniture tags.
Are you the one that's taking questions on that, Mayor Hewitt?
Yes.
Okay. What was the amount of income generated from the tags this past year?
Do you have that, Susan?
We can go get it, we don't know.
Is Adam here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to know. And then I also like to know the income that will be generated from the new fee.
I beg your pardon, I didn't hear you.
I'd also like to know what the income will be from the new fee. Like, it's $36 a month, or $36 a year, on how many customers? How much would that be as far as revenue for the city?
It's 49.
I believe last month Kathleen had put out there's, I don't have the amounts with me.
Is Adam here? I think that we pick up 49, how many do we pick up a year? Forty nine, uh, 49. How many do we pick up? Trash pickups do we have a year? 49 something? 49, is anybody from the street department here? Adam? Okay, let me go back, I've got it somewhere here.
My question is, is how much do we pay currently for our dump fees? Like, what is the total and what would, what difference will it make with this fee area increase?
He was supposed to be here.
He was supposed to be here.
I talked to him this morning, he was supposed to pull all that and be here.
No, he was not feeling very well earlier, but, or yesterday weekend. Just second. I put out, where did you say, Mayor?
Do you have a figure, Susan, on?
No, I asked you to have Adam and Josh give you those figures so they'd be more accurate than what we just get a deposit, that's all we get.
Okay.
So if we can't get those figures tonight, can we just table that and come back to that next month when you have the data available?
I think Lori went up to see what she could pull out.
I did send a letter, you're right, I did send an email to Josh Chance about what we generate on the income, or what they receive from utilities and then what is apparently transferred over to us. Let me see where that email is.
I just sent Josh a message, he said he's getting that number, number of customers at least that pay the trash fees.
It's 49, 4,900 or something like that, thank you. Dustin.
Does anybody from the public have anything that they'd like to, any comment they'd like to make about it?
Okay.
Lady Vickers?
Go ahead, Janelle, come on up.
I have those numbers when Janelle's done.
Kathleen, how many total households did you have?
4,928. Do you want me to go ahead or do you want me to let Janelle go first?
Let Janelle go first.
Yours doubled than what mine's was, but I checked it and I came up with $180 a year for each person that paid utilities. And estimated the cost for the year was $86,000, but you said there is 4,000.
It's 4,000, sorry.
So you can double that twice, that's how much revenue the city will be getting.
We, uh, go ahead, we can do the revenue numbers when, when you're done. I apologize, I won't interrupt again.
That's okay. My question is, where is all this money gonna go? And how do you spend it?
It goes into the general fund.
What do you spend on the general, what does the general fund, what do you take that money out of and what do you spend it on?
Goes through different, different areas of the city for maintaining a city, also, you know, Matt.
What we have record of is when the trash fees went in place, November 17th of 16, to date, 10/4/21, the city has received an amount of $30,252 for trash fees. That's the total amount from 16 to 21 that we have received for trash fees.
For those tags, for purchasing the tags up in your office?
No.
That we were talking about?
Yes. Oh, is this just tags? Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna say.
I was just wondering about the trash, the fees, the utilities, the depositary.
Yeah, and I've got that here too.
It's. You promptly out, because you probably got left in that pile.
What was that number again, Susan, please?
30,250.
Money we got from the utilities for picking up trash?
Yeah.
That's how many years was that again, Susan, please?
It was 16 to 21.
There he is.
Okay. Did you take the microphone, please?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you done?
No, I wasn't done.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm gonna ask you to step back and let him speak first, because the question that she's asking needs to come from him.
But you didn't have those answers when we were ready for it, and now we've asked for our public, somebody from the public to make comments, and so I think you should let her finish.
I have not moved on to public comments.
Yeah, you, yes you did.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Janelle, sorry, I'm sorry, Janelle.
Well, like I said, I just would like to know, okay, if we spending, if we, if the council vote on this $15, and like I said, that's $180 a month, a year, that I pay. And if you got 4,000 people paying $180 a month, that doubles to $86,000 a year, a year. So, again, that's close to over a hundred some thousand dollars that's gonna be going into the general fund.
Okay.
What is the?
Go ahead.
What is, I get, or the rest of the people in Peru get, for that hun, that money that we paying for trash pickup that we don't even have to get a tag for anything, we just pay the $15 every month, we could live here for another 10 years and never ask you to pick up anything. So, the problem is with that is with me. Why is the city wants to raise that to $15? Or why the mayor wants to raise it to $15?
It is, can I speak?
Go ahead.
You gotta be on record, you gotta, you gotta have.
Yeah, come on.
It's, it's almost become a point to where we have to. Did you get the figures on the, is it roughly 720?
717,000.
That's how much we get a month from the deposit.
713.
All we have is the deposits.
So roughly 715,000 or so is what we bring in. The sanitation department's budget is, what was it, 825,000 last year? So, the sanitation department's not even being fully self-sustained from the garbage money. On top of that, the tonnage for garbage has raised, last year raised $2.28 at the landfill per ton. So, that in combination, $15 would bring in just enough money to finally sustain, probably for the first time ever, the sanitation department.
Okay.
And that is why, the main reason.
Okay, I just want answers.
So Adam, with that being said.
They just don't have any answers, they just said we're gonna raise it to $15 and not say why, where the money is going, how's it gonna be spent, and if I'm paying, I wanna know where my money is going.
Right. Well, it also includes, well, for more, like you said, that you still plan on getting rid of the tags, right?
On what?
Of the tags, bulky item tags, if, if you did increase it to 15, you would.
The tags are gone.
Okay, see, right there, I mean, that's gonna help keep the alleyways clean from people who don't wanna buy tags. Brush pickup, that's still included in your sanitation fee, that's a service we offer. The dump truck rentals, $150 apiece is still half the price of a 10-yard dumpster, I mean, which is another nice benefit the citizens of Peru get, so.
Okay, but, you know, that's, I understand now, but I think that would be helpful when you decide to raise taxes on people that pay their life bill, plus the life bill is also going up, that you need to have some figures to tell the people why you're doing it, and not just saying we're gonna do it. Thank you.
I got a question for you, Adam.
Yeah.
Um, I get the part that we can't sustain ourselves and this might balance us back out, which I completely agree with, but what do you feel about removing the tags? Now, everybody's gonna be able to throw all this stuff in there, what's that gonna raise, the trash dump fee, with the amount of stuff that people can now just throw away because they don't have to worry about recycling it, or paying to have it hauled off?
Right.
Do you feel we're gonna have the same issue as the 800 mattresses in the alley like we did four years ago?
I mean, I.
I mean, that's gonna.
Right.
Dramatically increase the dump fee.
To me, with what we brought in on the bulky items tags anyways, wasn't really a, a whole lot.
Right, but we also weren't paying to have them dumped either.
Right. I, I don't see there being a, I mean, there's only so many beds and pieces of furniture, I don't see there being like a.
That's why I didn't have a problem with the tags, because you only do it once every five, seven years, it's not like it's something that you do quite often. So I didn't have an issue with the tags, but if the increase needs to go up to cover the cost of the dump fees, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
But I don't know that adding, throw whatever you want away, it's gonna increase that dump even more now.
Well, yeah, I, to me, it was just basically with them increasing the tonnage, the price per ton.
Right.
And, and now they don't have, you know, city doesn't have to pull from general fund to match what we're lacking in the sanitation budget.
I'm just worried opening the door saying we'll pick up anything now, I don't have a problem with the $3 fee.
Well, there's still city ordinances, like against construction piles, and perhaps we can look at putting in a city ordinance kind of, you know.
To monitor that?
Monitor.
Kind of parameters?
Exactly.
Right, and that's only my fear, people just starting to throw away everything, and then the problem that we had in the past, people in the county just driving down the alleys, dropping off their stuff because they know it's gonna get picked up.
Right, right, yeah, we've had to run out to Denver Pike a couple times, right where the city, you know, limits are, when we pick up mattresses and things, that people just, it's kinda sad, but.
Adam, would there be a limit to the, like, TVs, fridges, or appliances?
Yeah.
We picked up.
We don't pick up TVs and, and things are free on anyways, 'cause the landfill won't, won't take them, so, from us, so.
It's kinda like tires.
Yeah, tires, things like that.
Tires, they won't pick up.
Yeah, apparently they found out that the tires would build methane gas in them once they were buried, and then they'd explode up out of it.
So I wonder if we need to do an ordinance adaptation to make the parameters, so we, before we adopt this. I mean, to make it, to do the ordinance at the same time as adopting a fee, so we can educate the public on, this is what will be accepted, and this is what, you know, this is.
We can add it in.
That's what, you know, that's kinda what I'm, that's what I'm wondering.
We can add it in next month, or the next two months?
Are you aware of what county people have to pay for trash pickup per month? I don't know the actual figures, I know they're my. Used to be 28 bucks a month. I think it's more than that, no. I think it's around $35, I do believe. I'm glad I live in town. Yeah.
Did you get your answers, Betsy? You had it first.
Again?
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
I have one quick question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Under the tag, under the tag program, we charge $40 for a refrigerator, and on down, you know, $10 for mattress, 'cause these could not go in the landfill and so forth. Now, are, now, Adam, you mentioned that we will not be picking up refrigerators and stuff like that, correct?
I mean, I'll do whatever they tell me, but, yeah, as far as.
We never have. Right, you had to buy a tag, I mean, you come to the city, buy a tag, and they would, they would take it off, and that would cover the disposal piece of it.
Yeah, I don't know if we ever even, did we even sell?
We never picked up refrigerators.
It was in the, in the ordinance that there was a $40 fee for refrigerators and so on and so forth.
Far as I know, we've never.
Yeah, but I honestly don't have any. Fair enough, but by saying that we're gonna remove the tags and all that, now we're liable to get people to drop those off in the alley unless they're fully versed in what can be out there and what can't be out there. So that's an issue that we're gonna have to look at, because you don't wanna start going down the alley and all of a sudden there's refrigerators out there.
Right.
Not that in this town that's a really huge problem, 'cause we got so many junkers running up and down the alley, they pick up everything. I mean, I put an old table out last week and it was there for four hours. So, but, I mean, still, you know.
That's about time.
Yeah, I know, it is a slow day. As long as the stuff's getting where it needs to go, and we're not paying fees to actually take it to recycling or something along those lines.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Adam, can you come back up, please? So, what if we tabled this, that ordinance review committee got together?
Well, it's coming up later on in the agenda.
That's correct.
You can table it then if you, if you want to.
That's correct.
Okay.
Are you sticking around?
Yes.
That's right, it's just a hearing.
Any other further discussion? If not, the public meeting from 5:45 to 6:03. Need a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Loto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, now we will call the October 4th City Peru Common Council meeting to order at 6:03 PM. If you would stand with a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the opening invitation from Brett Wedding.
May I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for your goodness and mercy to us. We pray, Lord, that you would bless this meeting tonight, Lord, that you would fill the council, and the mayor, and the attorney, and the city clerk, fill their hearts with wisdom and understanding, help them to operate with integrity and ethics. We pray, Lord, that you would let them have the mind that they are here to serve this community. We pray, God, that you would bless each department. We thank you for those that serve our city, and the police and fire departments, for the city department, the street department, all of those that work and labor and volunteer in many groups across this city. We pray for our school systems and our economy. We ask that you would pour out your blessing and favor upon Peru. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Moving on to unfinished business.
You gotta do the roll call.
Oh, yes, thank you. Take a roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Dustin?
Here.
Loto?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Saad Ashini?
Here.
Here.
Okay, reading and correction of the journal from minutes of the last regular meeting. Any corrections, or anything from the journal that was passed out? Seeing none? Good motion to accept reading and.
You have, you have to make a motion to dispense with the rules and approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Nobody.
I didn't hear a motion.
No, it's gotta come from.
Motion to. Oh, I heard a second, but I didn't hear a motion.
I know, we didn't, yeah, there's no motion, it's gotta.
I thought somebody did.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Loto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Loto?
Yes.
Yeah, council liaison communications, let's start with Tom, come this way.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Pete?
Same, the county government did not have a meeting this, this month, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Steve?
Nothing to report.
Betsy?
Nothing.
Did you call my name?
Kathleen?
Um, we're gonna re-institute the, or reactivate the police retention and fire department committee that was started in March, April, and I've asked a couple people to be on that, one, and they're gonna attend the first meeting, make sure that they understand what is, is meant to happen, and Tom's on that, Joe Hayes is on that, and I've asked Stephanie Higdon to be on that, and Brandon Cabbage. And we'll get with the police and fire department, and we'll get that set up and get working on a few things. One of them is Mark Hobbs, that, I just recently talked with him at Heartland College, our career center, can't hear, okay, Mark Hobbs, that, he and I just talked today, and I'm gonna go over there and talk with him, they have a criminal justice program, that I think if we pull together and market with them and make it, you know, cool, that be a law enforcement officer or firefighter again, firefighter does not have a problem, but law enforcement, that we could, you know, we could really do some good things, so I just wanted to let you know about that. Also, should I bring this one up for the Makita? I'm the Makita liaison, and on October 28th, there is a conference, and if I understand correctly, we haven't spent any of our education funds yet, Jim Ted is gonna be teaching, and it's in Bloomington, I can get a ride down with him, I will pay for my own hotel room, which is $109, I'll pay for my own food, and it's for economic development, it's one night, one, I'll be down there one night, two days, and it's, that's just creating local, how do we do business retention, which is a big cause, that's something that we really need to focus on, and, and it would be $450, $50 that would need to come out of the city council education budget, and I believe there's $1,000. And I don't think Jim's gonna charge me gas to go down, so, I just need the approval of the city council, and to have that, the bill go to, to the city. I don't know what we do with that, Dustin, how do we?
Is there a budget set up for reimbursement?
Well, I don't think it's set up, obviously if she has personal expenses, whatever, she could ask for that reimbursement.
I'm not asking for that.
Right, but as far as the city council's budget, I guess if, just a motion, there doesn't need to be a resolutionary.
I think she should go, definitely.
And.
Representing us.
You guys have the mo, or the money in your budget, so, I mean, spend it.
What do we have to do? Make a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
It would just be $450, and I'd take care of the rest of it.
Second.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mark, you second?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Loto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
And Woa.
Yes.
Thank you, next, thank you very much for your support, and we'll, I'll report back to you guys next, next city council meeting, so thank you, this is.
What, what was this called?
It is. Practitioner's Guide to Economic Development, it's a two-day conference in Bloomington, IU. There's still openings, if you wanna go, I don't think that, there's room in the car for us.
On October the 28th? That was October 28th, correct?
That is, the October 28th, I apologize, but, and, we're gonna leave early, 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 the Thursday, Thursday morning, and it starts at 8:30 that morning, and we'll be back Friday evening. But I can give you the information if you'd like to go.
Okay.
I think it'd be really good, 'cause we need to learn how to help our businesses better, that's something that's been brought up over and over again, so, thank you very much for your support.
Okay. Mr. Ramsey?
The animal control has four dogs looking for their odors at this particular time. Also, Adam, if you're still here, I received an email from a citizen that would like to thank the street department, and also the trash pickup, what you've been doing throughout the city. So, that's from a citizen here in Peru. Also, the Miami County Highway is going to advertise for some materials for the 800 North Project, the Miami County Commissioners approved the nine-year contract for the Eagle View Reassessment for Miami County, since there's no county assessor in this particular area. And the pre-utileities Fall Riverbank Cleanup will be held on October 16th on a Saturday from 9:00 to noon, and meet, and they will meet at the wastewater treatment plant at 221 West Riverside Drive, and they will be having drinks and snacks, and long sleeves, boots, and gloves to help clean up the, the riverba, riverbank there on the south side. So that's all I have.
They're gonna be rain or shine, what's that again? Rain or shine?
Yeah.
Rain or shine? That's what I, that's what I've heard.
Where are your butt bucks?
Patricia?
Okay. The utility board met on September 1st and September 15th at the 4:00 PM at the utility building. The board approved the hiring of the Lock Mueller Group to write a preliminary engineering report for the next phase of the long-term control plan for the stormwater storage. Mr. Stephen Ray, the executive director for the nonprofit's North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council, attended by team viewer. Mr. Chance asked about grant opportunities for the Peru Utilities for the future projects. Mr. Ray will be looking out for grants that could be used by the Peru Utilities. The position for assistant office manager was filled by Rain Bindrell. Congratulations to him, he has been employed by Peru Utilities for seven years. At the time of the meeting, there was an opening for a commercial bookkeeper. The aviation board usually meets on the second Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM at the Peru Airport, but the meeting was canceled. And the planning commission usually meets on the last Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM at City Hall. There was not any business to discuss, so the meeting was, there was not a meeting. There was not any business to discuss, so the meeting was, there was not a meeting. The civic center committee usually meets the last Saturday of the month at 9:30 at the civic center. I was out of state at that time, so we canceled. But the volunteers for the meeting, the mayor and civic center benefit met on September 16th and September 30th at City Hall at 4:00 PM to finalize the details for the event. We are still looking for volunteers and items for the silent auction. Please contact Rebecca Thoden at City Hall. And I passed around a civic center fundraiser event flyer. If you happen to get a look at it, we are planning on October 16th, a fundraiser, it's, there's going to be pulled pork, hot dogs, games, music by Peter and Company. It's free will donation, and all the money that is ever collected is going to go to the civic center to help build it back up. It needs some work, and we hope you come and enjoy. There's going to be, hopefully, lots of people coming and attending. We look forward to it. It's from 11:00 to 2:00.
Is there specific, is there specific use for the funds that you're going to raise?
Right. We need some new air conditioners, and the, we are targeting right now the, the, oh, the pavement needs sealed. There's, those are the two main things right now. Ace Hardware is going to paint, provide the paint for the portico as you drive under. So that was one of the things we wanted to fix, so they're going to give us the paint, and then, I don't know who's going to do the painting, but that paint's going to be there, so there's a lot of things on the inside that needs work.
Actually, there's, there's one correction that I need to make. All of the donations we received that day will come into the general fund.
Okay.
And then the civic center will come to the council to ask for appropriations of the money we collect that day for the maintenance on the civic center.
Okay.
Because every, everything we collect has to come back in to the general fund first before it can be brought back out.
Okay. That makes sense. We can't just have money floating around.
Moving right along. Under unfinished business, City of Peru Common Council Ordinance Number, excuse me, 12-2021, an ordinance to amend section 152.18 of the Peru Municipal Code. This was discussed in a previous meeting. I will entertain a motion now.
Someone actually has to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider.
Second.
It's already, it's not...
It was...
It was considered before.
It's already been considered.
Okay, to approve?
Adopt.
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 Second. Motion been made and seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Guston, step down. Cloto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saheh Doshini?
Yes.
And Wau.
Yes.
Our next order of business, ordinance number 27-21, ordinance for the appropriations and tax rates. This was discussed in a previous meeting. I'll now entertain a motion.
This is a second read-through, correct?
Yeah. I make a motion to consider.
It's been considered. This is the adoption.
It's the second reading, we're allowed to discuss it again. It's how we did it last year.
Do they reconsider it then?
So the motion to consider is already been, is already been considered, however, you can motion to open up discussion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to open up discussion on ordinance number 27, 2021. And just so that everyone knows out there, this is the ordinance to adopt the budget. No, if anybody from the union, fire department, you know, wants to speak at this time, or...
Has there been a second?
No. I seconded.
She seconded.
Good.
Go ahead.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Cloto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saheh Doshini?
Yes.
Wau?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Nathan Nutt, I'm the president of Prufire Local 383. I have a few things we'd like to say, but I want to start off by clearly stating that the issues about to be presented to you and to the public are in no way meant to be of any personal nature between any member of Local 383 and any individual person or people. We have nothing but respect for the city police department and are fully supportive of them in every way. It's important to us, it's important to the members of Local 383 that those facts stay in the forefront of anything that will be mentioned further in the statement. So first and foremost, we want to acknowledge the proposed 3% raise that has been presented on the department's behalf in this budget. We are all very grateful for any increase in pay that is offered to us. However, prior to last year, the police and fire have always been given equal raises. Last year, the police were given 6.5% compared to the fire department's 2%. We do know we were offered to lose a position to be able to match the police raises, which we did decline. To clarify, the police gave up a patrolman position that had not been staffed for over a year. In order for the fire department to voluntarily give up a position, an employee would have had to have been let go in some fashion to vacate that position. We feel the circumstances, while on paper were equal, were not realistic in the same, same situation. Additionally, with the call volume in this past year, our current staffing of 30 is often stretched thin to adequately cover the city and fire territory appropriately, therefore reducing the number of staff at the fire department would only potentially create more public safety shortfalls, both for us, the firefighters, and the public in general. The police department stated they are losing staff to surrounding departments due to pay differences, which of course is accurate. The fire department has lost two talented young firefighters in the past year to other fire departments as well. My point in saying that, this is not a unique problem to the police department, and keeping the fire department's pace significantly lower than that of the police department will only further drive morale down within the fire department, and certainly doesn't discourage newer members of the fire department for looking at better paying fire careers. Chief Hawke stated at the last city council meeting that raises need to start at the top and work their way down the ranks. The members of Local 383 feel disheartened and disappointed in that statement. It's our collective belief that in order to recruit and retain, retain talented young people, to echo the opinion of the police post people, the raises really should begin at the ground level and work their way up the ranks. We feel this investment in the younger members of the police and fire departments will resonate throughout the ranks and only create more of a positive environment that will encourage quality employees to choose to stay and have a fulfilling career here at the city of Peru. I am proud to stand today to represent the members of Local 383. The men and women, I am speaking on behalf of tonight of some of the best and most selfless people you'll know. Regardless of your decisions on raises and other city politics, we will all show up to our next shift and serve this community to the best of our abilities. All we ask is that we are viewed and treated fairly with our counterparts at the Pruru Police Department. Thank you.
Okay, so I have some comments about the budget, some concerns. It seems like we are on the verge of a public, probably not on the verge, we are in the middle of a public safety crisis between the police department and them working so much overtime and potential for the fire department as well. My issues with the 2022 proposed budget are that the ARP money, the $1.22 million, is listed in the budget with no plan on how that money is to be spent. I know there's rules, but I don't like the fact that there just is laid out there on the capital outlay for anybody to spend. I also think that there's ways that we can fix this public safety crisis. There is money. When people say that there's not money, there is. We just have to make tough choices, okay? One thing is vehicles. This, this budget is vehicle-heavy. It has almost $300,000 of vehicles in it. So I'm proposing that we take out the $35,000 for the building department truck. They had the money in there to give $17,000 that the mayor could buy a car, so not feel like it's necessary for them to get a truck. I also don't think that we should give $45,000 for the fire chief vehicle. The Pruru Police Department has asked for four cars totaling $150,000, and I would recommend that they cut back to three cars instead.
With, with that being said, though, that is not a long-term fix, which...
I'm not done. I'm not done.
Okay.
Okay? The other thing that I'd like to recommend are some salary changes. I would recommend that there's no wage increase for any elected or appointed officials, and I would also recommend that we take out the administration, the mayor's administration secretary. He has not had one for one year, and there doesn't seem to be any need to hire, need to hire one. We haven't heard of anybody looking for one. So just those salary changes, just from taking the wage increases away from the elected and appointed officials and the secretary, that would give us almost $50,000 right there. And the savings from the vehicles that I was finishing up on, that's $130,000. The other thing, it would be consultation fees. We pay Baker Tilly, we have them budgeted for $50,000. When I talked to Baker Tilly last time, they were only, they'd only charged the city for $21,000. So I'm recommending cutting that down to $20,000 instead of 50. That would be another $30,000. Another fund is beautification, and I don't know if you guys remember back to the budget meeting last year in October? We had $485,000 listed in this account called beautification, and no one could say exactly what it was for, and it passed. And Baker Tilly has told me that we only spent like $35,000 out of it, okay? So all that's going to return to the general fund. And the next budget, you guys have it budgeted for $150,000, so I'm recommending cutting that down to 50. So all of these savings would equal about $310,000. So there is money out there. We can do things, we can pay our police, we can pay our firemen, there is money. So I hope this council, I hope you'll consider these suggestions, and I know that some of them might not be long-term solutions, but trust me, there's like 30 other things I'd like to list. Like our telephone bill went up $26,000 this year. I'd like to list that. There's like 30 other things I could list, but these are just five things that I think would be quick fixes that would help our public safety crisis.
And it would be, sounds like it would be sustainable. That's very sustainable.
Can we hear from our building department, our fire department, our police department on the vehicles as there need for them?
That's a good idea.
The four vehicles we asked for, one is to replace the K-9 vehicle. The K-9 vehicle right now is broke, that we currently have. One's to replace that, one's to replace an old Crown Vic, that's a 2010, and the other is to replace two of our older Toruses that are approaching 97,000 miles on them. One's already been in the shop, and we've spent $3,500 on it in the last year. It's only worth $4,000. So they're just becoming unreliable. The one that quit last night was going on a call when it quit. So it's to replace those vehicles.
But if you had the choice to have your staff adequate and to be able to pay your officers more and to be able to get, you know, adequate staffing and not have to work these guys so many hours of overtime, would you choose that instead of four cars? I mean, you still get three cars and money to fix it.
It's a toss-up.
You'd rather have four cars?
Because the cars are going to wear out, and the cars are also a thing that attracts new employees.
But I'm saying, three cars, it's not four.
It's not attractive for somebody to come here and say, here's your 100,000-mile car. You might be in it a year, you might be in it three years. Those things attract people.
So to Betsy's point, sustainability-wise, three cars this year, three cars now, we just keep, how, how would that impact?
It takes four cars to maintain the fleet we have, and that would be driving them eight years. We're currently driving stuff eight to 12.
If you get, have an emergency and your car doesn't work, you're in trouble.
Well, you could have an emergency where a guy's worked 16 hours and something happens, and the city gets sued too.
And like I said, we, we've had guys work 16 hours when they do Operation Pullover. Guys will trade shifts and work 16. Yeah, they're working more 16s than they ever have, but they've worked 16s before.
Taking away three vehicles, two vehicles, or one, doesn't make the police department any safer, because if they can't hire somebody, and even if they do, it's eight to 12 months before they're ever out on their own.
I know, you keep telling that same story. I mean, that's what you always say, you always say how long it takes, but if we start now, we can fix the problem. If you want to wait till January to come up with ideas, then that's still another whole year to get people trained.
It can be, yeah, it can be resolved right now.
I mean, the cars are still moving, the guards are still wearing out, cars are still breaking. All the old ones are the ones sitting in the lot. If we were full staff, those guards would be even worse shape. I mean, this is kind of the time to catch up on vehicles, because they've gotten bad repair. It's not from lack of maintenance, it's just they're old and they're wore out. You know, they're unreliable.
Did you watch the WTHR coverage? Did you watch the coverage of your department? That one thing that the anchorman said, he was walking through the parking lot, and he was like, look at all these cars that aren't being driven, because we don't have that thing.
And some of them are pool cars. One of them was a new car we hadn't gotten issued out yet. One car's back there we just haven't gotten rid of, because it's not worth anything, and if a car wrecks, a car gets damaged, we might need it. We're planning on hiring two more people here, hopefully in a month. The next ones probably won't be hired till the 1st of January.
And if these cars get removed out of the budget and next year you do fill this...
It's one car, one.
One car.
What's that?
For the police department, yeah, we're just still...
One car. Not, you still get three.
We're going to have one of our other older cars on the road another year. Whether it lasts, doesn't last, I can't say.
Agreed.
Because that's where we're at. We don't have the good ones sitting in the lot. They're all the ones that aren't very reliable, that we're trying to get out the door.
Does FOP want to be heard on this issue at all? No?
I just wanted to hear from the department heads what the reasoning was for having those in the budget.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Chief, would you like to speak?
Real quick on our budget, a correction with you, Betsy. On our budget, so our fire equipment fund, which that will be coming out of, will not affect the general fund at all, so that does not help the city as far as eliminating that one vehicle from that.
I understand that, but I'm concerned about all funds that are in the red, and your fire equipment vehicle, or your fire equipment fund is $37,000 in the red.
So there is a correction to that, and it's a little bit of justification in that.
Well, this is the cash flow sheet from the financial firm that we pay big money to.
So I will, I explain how that works. I explained to Mr. Anderson, so we have, in our fire equipment fund, roughly after this year, we apply $100,000, and we use that to buy just equipment. You know, our Truck 7, our Command 2, our engines is all bought out of that money. Be tough for the city to come up with half a million dollars to buy a fire truck just all of a sudden, so we have a tax basis just where that's like a savings account that you would have. So in that savings account, roughly after the end of the year, it's going to be $500,000. So that $37,000 deficit is, it's based off a year. So I put in $75,000 for Station 2.
Eric, would you grab that microphone to get real close to it? Take it off of there, so you can...
So the $75,000 is for Station 2 for cleanup fees, which I, I call it. Basically, what that is, is once we get it going at the end of the year, I'll need little stuff, you know, like a flagpole and different things like that, so that's why that $75,000 is in there. And then the cheese vehicle. So basically, that is the 75 and the 40, 45,000. We have $84,000 going in to that fund this year. So we're looking at as a one-year picture. That one-year picture is a $37,000 deficit, but in reality, we have half a million dollars in that account. So next year, if I go and ask for an engine 2, then what we're looking at is half a million dollars, I say $450,000, but I still only have $84,000 going in that account. It's still going to be a deficit, but the money is there, and it needs to be spent down, because then we can build up too much, and then they look at the tax base and go, wait a minute, if our department has all this money and they're not spending it, they don't need it. our department has all this money and they're not spending it, they don't need it. Well, we do, but we have to save for our equipment. So that's where that comes up with that $37,000 deficit. I know it looks like on paper that, hey, we're going to be over, but we're really not because we have the money and savings for that. Because there's only $84,000 going in there a year. And that's how that account works. But it does not have effect on the city general fund at all. It's completely separate. It's like having two checking accounts or two savings accounts. So I hope that explains that a little better to you. A little different on paper, but in reality, that's the big picture, how that works.
My confusion is, what do you mean, on paper it's different, you know, because we've got dollars and cents and negatives and balances and reds and blacks. What do you mean? Can you explain that better? So I better understand what you mean, reality versus what's here.
Okay, so again, we say next year we want a new engine 2, which that will be our next purchase, ladder truck with engine 2, but ladder truck will be probably out of the bond the way it looks. So when we go to purchase that engine 2, let's say it's $450,000. Well, we put in for engine 2, same as I'm putting in for command vehicle. Next year, you say, well, wait a minute, now we're $400,000 in the red. Well, we're not because it's in our savings account and we're, that year, there's 80, this year, there'll be, in 2020, projected will be $84,000 going into our fire equipment fund. But there's going to be $75 for Station 2, which may not be spent at all. We just don't know. But I just put it in as a safety factor.
We don't know about Station 2 yet.
So, you know, that's where we're at with that. So, you know, the big picture is, yeah, the money's in there, but you look at the little picture of the year account, it looks like we're in the red, but we're not because all the money is in savings, so.
So how do you rationalize getting a vehicle that, explain to me why you feel good about getting this vehicle?
The command vehicle?
Correct.
So it was passed down to me from prior chief. It's a 2013 Ford Fusion car. It really has never fit the needs as a chief's vehicle, you know, as far as hauling gear or anything in the back of it. It's in the trunk. It's getting up in mileage. It's now four-wheel drive, which is nice for the winter. So in this year, it was budget for this year, but saving city money, I didn't do it because there is no vehicles. And then, since there is no vehicles, that the price went up. I mean, you get a stickered vehicle, say $30,000 or went $40,000 for it. So I just figured for next year, it'd be better not to get, even try and get anything this year and just try again next year. So that's where I'm at.
So has your vehicle been stuck in the snow and that kind of thing this past year?
Yeah, it's just a car, you know. As far as going on runs or using it to utilize anything, if we have a snow emergency or something, it's no good for that, but...
Well, I'm just saying, you just used the example of you need it in case your car gets stuck and for the winter. And so I was just logically...
Doesn't all cars get stuck in winter? Two-wheel drive cars?
No, but logically, I, you know, I'm asking about your particular vehicle. Have you been, have there been times when you've been stuck going to an emergency or?
I just don't use it. If we have a snow emergency, it just doesn't get used for that.
Okay.
You know, it just sits there. You know, we also adopted a program this year, the drone program, which we have no way of carrying that, you know. And twice that I've used it, I've used my personal vehicle, my van, to carry that equipment because my car won't. So, because there's no room in it.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to follow the line of logic that you presented, so...
And again, so 2013 and it's just, you know, time to upgrade to a truck, light duty. Been looking at the Fords and Chevys, you know, 150, nothing fancy, rubber floor mats, so.
Are you looking for something that will hold the gear?
Pardon me?
Are you looking for something that will hold the gear that you need?
Yeah, to hold my gear and the gear that's in the vehicle right now. I don't, a lot of times I leave my gear at station because there's just no room in the trunk, so.
Okay.
I can't put the gear in the passenger area.
Okay.
Questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Somebody from the building department, please?
So the reason that we need it, is that what you want to know, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I feel that we need it is the truck, the vehicle that needs to be replaced is 23 years old. The maintenance on it from last year to this year doubled, plus the downtime. The code enforcement is what, through the attrition, they do roughly 300 properties, maintain them, whether it be cleaning up stuff or mowing and that kind of stuff. So it's multiple uses over that. We've got other vehicles in the fleet that are getting age on too. If we don't start somewhere, eventually it's going to be, well, there's four of them, or three of them sitting there and none of them run because we can't afford to fix them. It just doesn't seem to make sense to put $5,000 or $6,000 in repairs in a 23-year-old vehicle, especially because there's a grant available if we qualify for the grant. If we don't, if we don't have the money in the budget, at least earmarked for that, we won't even qualify for the grant. The grant's a 55% matching grant. So it's kind of one of these things, if we don't put the money in there, we can't qualify for the grant. If we put the money in there and then we can qualify for, then we do qualify for the grant, we're paying 45% for a vehicle. So it's one, and if we, if we don't get the grant, obviously that money just rolls right back into the general fund and never gets used. So it's kind of one of the things, either, if we want to try for the grant, we've got to have the money in there. If we say, well, we don't care about a grant, then don't put it in. It's just that simple. So there's not, not asking for the money to actually purchase the truck, asking for money to subsidize the purchase of the truck. And if we don't have it in there, we can't, there's no chance of getting a subsidized grant.
And this is for the mowing crew, correct?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll go in the fleet and it'll just work its way right down.
So let's go back to Betsy's point about helping out, you know, raising the base pay for our police officers, which is absolutely critical. I don't think anybody in this state would disagree. So your vehicle, if purchasing this vehicle, could you sacrifice a year to help build up our police? Would you be willing to do that?
The bottom line is, if the vehicle is not approved, then we're going to spend, who knows, but this year we spent almost $4,000 on repairs.
Okay.
So either we're going to spend it on a vehicle or we're going to spend it on repairs.
Okay, well, $4,000, $5,000, it's a lot different than what you're talking about.
That's one, no, that's one vehicle.
The thing is, but I've got a question.
Well, you guys let me answer.
Okay.
That's one vehicle. So it's more than that that you're putting in there. And what I'm, my point is, the longer you wait, those repairs just keep escalating. Not only then the downtime. So now we've got properties that aren't getting mowed next door to this person, or we've got properties that aren't getting cleaned up because we've got a truck set for two weeks waiting to get repaired.
So part of the year, there's no mowing.
Correct.
So would you be willing to delay and work on getting, we can get Steve Ray involved with you, work on getting grants for a new vehicle to help save the police department and to bring in, take the load off them? We're, you know, we're in a bad way right now. And it's critical. And, you know...
It's not my decision. It'd be the council's decision, is what it boils down to. I put in what I think is the right thing to do. It's up to the council to make that decision. It's not up to me to make that decision.
It kind of is because you could, you could withdraw your request.
But the budget has already been put in. That's what I stand by that. That's what, that's what I believe it takes to run the department.
Okay, so what you're saying is, that's exactly what you need.
That's exactly what I'm saying, is I stand by my budget request because we have a grant opportunity now that may not be available later. And I don't want to spend $40,000 when we can spend $13, you know, something like that.
Are you regretful that you took the trade that the mayor told us about, that he got a truck from the dog pound and then he traded it to your department and then took $17,000 out of your department to buy his own vehicle?
No, not at all. We use that truck regularly now.
Okay, so you're not regretful about that $17,000 coming out of your account?
No, because basically, we were able to get a truck that was decent, that we knew the history on for $17,000. And it does get used for code enforcement and it gets used for mowing and those kinds of things.
And you couldn't have just gotten the truck from the dog pound without having to purchase it from the mayor?
I have no idea. I can tell you that we had money in the budget then to get a vehicle and we got a vehicle. So, which has nothing to do with my budget today.
It does because...
Well, it doesn't in my opinion.
Well, that's your opinion, but...
We got a, we got a vehicle then. The issue at hand is my request to have the money put in there so we can qualify for a grant, so that we can replace a 23-year-old vehicle. That's the only issue that I have.
But history also...
That is your issue that you have to deal with.
I think it's a lot more than my issue. I think it's the public's issue.
Again, it's the council's decision whether they want to do it.
Right, oh, 100%.
So it's your issue to deal with, not my. My issue was to prepare my budget, which I did. It's submitted.
Yes.
It's up to you to make that decision.
Right, you're right. It's up to the council to make the right decision. 100% correct.
I just think, I'm just editorializing on this. I just think right now we really need to make, like Betsy said, some very tough decisions.
And that's your, again, that's why you guys are on the city council. That's not my decision to make. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
You want me to come up?
Please.
Sam Finnegan, FOP Lodge 72. So first of all, I do want to agree with the chief. Chief Sofianis is correct. We need to keep quality vehicles on the road for our guys. It is a, it is a perk for a younger guy coming to our police department to not drive a 12 or 13-year-old vehicle. But I get that. So I'm going to give you my personal opinion is, if we can get this problem corrected, I would walk a beat. I would walk downtown if I had to. We have to get this problem corrected. We've got too many guys working too many hours. Set it before. Our stance is going to be the same. FOP Lodge 72 will stand behind its guys. There are issues. We want a plan. We want some sort of resolution. We want to know what's going on. We need to have a future plan set up so we don't lose the remaining officers that we have here. I'll say it now and I'll say it tomorrow and I'll say it the next day and the next day. Until we can get a plan, we are going to struggle. We've got guys working numerous doubles, 12-hour shifts, working their days off. So if you're asking me to take away a car, I'm going to tell you, take it away. That's me. That's not the stance of the FOP right now. We haven't had a meeting to discuss it. I'm not taking away anything from the chief. The police department in Peru has historically funded their own raises, whether that be cars through the years. Last year, we gave up a position to get that extra 3%. And I understand, Local 383 came up here. I'm not knocking these guys for anything. I respect and I love these guys. I've worked with them for 18 and a half years. I respect what they do. But when it comes down to it, yeah, last year, we gave up a position. They had a position to give up and on December 15th of 2020 is when they hired their last officer. But I'm not going to get up here and throw stones. I respect exactly what they did. They wanted to keep their family together. I agree with that. I'm trying to keep my family together. That's all there is to it. These guys love working together. They do it every day. They do a great job for the city of Peru. So do we. That's all I got.
May I ask, Mayor, can I, may I ask a question? I don't know if you want to stay there. You met with you, Steve, Sam, Susan, you met a week ago. When did you meet last? I think Chief Sofianis was there, if I remember, if that thing was reported correctly. Who was, who was in that meeting? When was that meeting? Can anybody tell me?
I was there for part of the time.
Okay. Who else was there?
So at 9:23, 2021, Mayor Hewitt, Tom Guston, Susan, Steve, myself, Chief Sofianis and Colton Pittner.
Okay. Mayor, what was the result, or Susan, what was the result of that meeting? What was discussed? Steve, what was, I mean, Tom?
Just trying to see where there was money available.
And no more money was found.
But we just, but Susan, but Betsy just found it. And it was available to...
She, she found a quick fix. She didn't find a fix because I can't sit here and justifiably bankrupt the city over a quick fix when there's got to be other solutions out there.
Miles, we've had so much time to be able to come up with those solutions. We've had a year and we've had different meetings and we have the opportunity right now, as is, right now, to pause, come back, excuse me, I'm, please, Mayor, I'm talking nuts very, I'll wait until you're done because that's very disrespectful. That's offensive in fact. So I'm, I'll wait till you sit down. Well, I've not done asking questions and that was very offensive. It was disrespectful and inappropriate.
It wasn't meant to be, but I understand your point of view.
Okay. Okay, so when this was discussed, what was, Susan, what did you say in this meeting? What was your, what opportunities or possibilities did you come up with?
I have no comment on what I said or did not say in that meeting.
I beg your pardon?
You heard me. I have no comment to you.
Steve, what did Susan say in that meeting?
I'm not getting in the middle of all this. We're here to adopt a budget.
But we're talking about trying to resolve a potential, okay. There's an opportunity to fix the budget, to fix, to bring up the base pay for these officers, which could be...
Is that sustainable? Like all of those removing that for the next five years?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm going to call order because it's not for you two to sit up there and talk back and forth at this meeting. This year, we're going over with Sam, with the fire department, with the street department and everybody else, but arguing back and forth is not going to fix anything.
I think I have some good solutions that could help. And I hope the council will listen.
That's, that's a good point. That's all. Yeah, you're, you're right, Mayor. There's no reason to argue. Betsy's presented some, some great resolutions that we can help the department. They're begging to help. You know, the fire department, if we don't watch over them too, they will be in the same situation. So I agree. I would fully support the suggestions that, that Betsy has made.
The bottom line, Kathleen, if you're done, I'll go ahead into this. The bottom line is, I would love nothing more than to see the police and the fire department go up to $50,000, $55,000 without a doubt. But it's, if you look at the second page, our population change from 2010 to 2019, Peru has went down 4.9%. Rochester went down 4.7. Wabash went down 6.8. But then you come over and look at the assessed value. The assessed value of Peru compared to all the others, there's only one lower and that is Montezuma.
Then, then why, sir, do you feel comfortable giving yourself a raise?
Pardon me?
Why do you feel comfortable giving yourself a raise if things are so bad?
I don't feel comfortable and you can have it back. I mean, that's...
Okay, we'll take it.
I'd beg you.
Excuse me. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak so much.
Thank you.
So here's what I'm wondering...
It's like I told you last year, I didn't ask for a raise last year, but I was told that I had to take a 1%.
I think you took a half.
No. There again, what you heard is not...
Well, actually what I heard would have been better for you than what you actually said.
I call, I'm calling you wrong on it because I didn't say that.
Mayor, can I ask you a question, please, about this?
Can I finish this first?
Please, I apologize. Yes.
If you go on the assessed value, Peru is second from the bottom. There's only one, everybody else is above us on this list with the exception of Montezuma. Montezuma is lower than us by $4,000. You come over to the medium household. Medium household in Peru makes $39,267. Medium household in Rochester, 51. Wabash, 44. Logan Sport, 37. Kokomo, right on down the line. Then per capita income, Peru at $20,733, right on down the line. Where are we going to... Where are we going to s- pay to sustain the kind of raise that we need? That we know that we need to give?
We cut down on excess spending and we don't give unnecessary wages to elected officials.
You always cut down excessive spending regardless of whether you give big raises or not. And I'm saying for this year, I felt obligated to give 3% to the Street Department, the Fire Department, and the Police Department because they worked all during the pandemic. All three of them did.
Right.
And we can't replace and keep replacing our Police and Fire. But if you look on that, too, bottom line is, Police Department package for one policeman is $79,595. For a fireman, it's $77,463. Then with the amount of time they get off during the year is another perk that's actually not figured in with the exception of their vacation. The holiday pays and everything, they don't get a holiday pay. That was rolled into their base pay a few years back. So they just gain if they're if on the Police and Fire, the only way they get a holiday off is if they physically take it or if it happens to fall on their day off. With the other city workers, that's not Police and Fire, they're given that day. They get 17 days extra a year on top of what they gain for their vacations. And you look at the whole package right now and I was there just a few weeks shy of 30 completing 39 years on the Police Department. And I know what these guys are going through. I know what the Fire Department's going through. The only thing is, I knew when I took over as being Mayor, I was going to be making tough decisions. However, this particular year, I felt, you know, the Fire Department got 2% last year, 2%. Police Department got 6% because they gave up a position. Fire Department was asked if they would want the same option. They chose not to. I respect them for that, but they accepted the 2%. That's one reason why I felt they deserved the 3%. And also, their police chief works the same hours as the fire chief. Or the fire chief works same hours as the police chief. He doesn't work a fireman's on 24 off 48 because he had to give up a second job to become the fire chief. And just like, you know, you've got different ranks throughout the Fire Department. They've got two right now, isn't it? That's not filled inspectors or something?
Just one mechanic's position. Just one mechanic's position.
Okay. And, you know, I just. I'm sorry, I know it's not a very popular thing. But I didn't take this job to be popular either.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, so this may this may cut through a lot of time. Are you, Susan, willing to sit down? This doesn't have to be adopted tonight. We still have time. Would you be willing to sit down, Betsy's plan, look at everything in the next two weeks? We can come back here two weeks from tonight and amend it and adopt it. Would you be willing to take two weeks to process, to look through this? Would you be willing to do that for the Police Department?
If it means cutting cars and everything else, no, I wouldn't.
There we go.
Because to me, that's not a fix.
Okay. Got your answer, police officers.
We don't need a raise.
We're not getting.
We don't, we we're not getting.
It's a pit anyway.
Yeah, we're not getting anything. I work at, you know, I bring home $480 after taxes.
And I'm not saying that the Street Department, that the Fire Department, that everybody else doesn't get a raise. I'm just saying elected officials and those that are appointed, like attorney, like the Building Department head. You know, those people, you know, the fire chief, the police chief, those appointed positions and the elected positions. Those plus that administrative assistant, if we took those out, that would be almost $50,000 in savings. And this this money that I'm proposing, this $310,000 I'm proposing, it could be used to help save, you know, our public safety or it also could be used to balance out some of these accounts that are in the red as well.
Sam Finnegan, FOP Lodge 72. Once again, I'd have to look at the numbers. I don't know what the numbers are for our benefits. But all I can say is, I don't know where the money's went for the last couple of years for the amount of officers that were not filled. I don't know if that money goes back in the general fund or what. Maybe you could ask Chief about that. But I know that the city is probably giving back quite a bit of money as far as the Peru City Police Department goes. When you don't have those positions filled and you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars that comes back into that budget, I don't know where it goes. I'm not a budget guy. I'm a police guy. So once again, just throwing it out there. I don't know where that money's been for the last couple of years, where it's going.
That's a good question.
That's on you guys, unfortunately. Once again, I will apologize to everybody involved in this. This is not a situation.
Why are you apologizing?
You know, because it's on you guys at this point.
That's why you're elected.
Here's the thing. It it's came to this point, whether it falls on this administration, this council, whatever, the problem, problem's here. It's got to get fixed. Like I said, there's there's money that's been given back from the Police Department the last several years because of positions not filled. I can't give you those numbers. I don't have them, but I want you to be aware of them.
Thank you.
I do know that, you know how the you guys gave up a position and it was taken it was taken out of the wage ordinance, but it wasn't taken out of the budget.
That's correct.
So there is actually 16 paid positions in the budget from last year. And I the guy from Baker Tilly told me that Susan was planning on using that extra, what is it, 40 some?
It's around $50,000.
To, I guess there's an extra pay period this this year, and that's what that money's going towards.
Last year.
That's that's what Eric.
The extra pay period was last year and we had to pay it this year and we're short this year and we got to take that money and make up that deficit.
Oh, that's what Eric said. So that's where that money's going, Sam.
So Betsy has taken so much time, Mayor, and come up with a brilliant plan. And some even though it might not be perfect. Can you believe that? It might not be perfect. And it could be reworked and talked about. What I just heard you say and what the entire city just heard you say is that you will not take the time the next two weeks to to stop and work the budget to see.
No, I did not say that. What I said was.
Yes, you did. You said you would not.
I will take time, but if it has to do with cutting vehicles and things to sustain a raise, no, I will not agree with that.
You can't rob Peter to pay Paul.
Exactly.
It's just that simple.
What does it cost when you have to train an officer and that officer leaves? How much is that costing the city?
Or $78,000 in overtime. How much is that costing the city?
I I can't explain the depth of disappointment I have right now at this moment.
I believe that we could, I don't believe that we need two weeks to fix it. I believe that we could amend the budget to reflect these changes tonight. So I just need to propose those changes and then we vote on it?
And you could, yes, propose and each change would need to be done individually.
Okay.
And I guess one question, I'm not sure, and I wish Eric Walsh was here to answer, is if you proposed to strike a line out of the budget, if you could then move those funds to another fund. I believe that might be adding to another fund and I don't know.
You can't. You cannot do that. We'd have to make the changes or work on the changes, then come back and have a proper budget that we would then have to. That's called.
Which I don't, I think that puts us in a tough situation because once you go adding money to another fund, you can't do that.
No, no, no. But the Mayor and Susan could work together. We can't take away, but there's an opportunity here to resolve some issues, but.
We can take away.
We can take away, I beg your pardon.
We can't.
That would that would have.
Got to go back in there somewhere and that increases the budget.
That would have to go.
When you take it away, it's still there. We got to move it somewhere, which is increases another line item is what we can't do.
But the Mayor and Susan can't.
But we can go back and if the budget was approved, you can go back and reappropriate that money out of that fund into a different one at the birth of the year.
That's what we took.
Right.
Okay, I'm not.
But there's that levy.
We we have the answer, so it's not going to happen.
I'm asking a question, though. Like if you take it out, it's got to go back somewhere and we can't add to a line item.
But but Mayor Susan can.
But I don't know if they can since the budget had already.
Not once it's already been proposed, it cannot be added to a line item. It can be taken out.
Taken out, yeah. All of my, all of my changes are decreases.
Right, but you're going to put that, you want to put that money back in somewhere.
Right.
So that would be increasing another line item. That's what we can't do.
So just in January, we could put that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So in January, we could take the line items out or that we can decrease, vote to decrease. And in January, reappropriate that to the police officers or fire or whatever is needed? Is that what we're saying?
If you amended the budget, made a motion to amend, took money from a line item, that money's gone because you can't add it to another one that'd be increasing a budget line item in another category. What you would, what could be feasible is at the start of the year, reappropriate the funds out of one account into another account.
Well, but if I wanted to take the ARP 1.22 million out, that could be taken out.
We can take that out.
We can take that out.
Take that out because it's not, the budget's not based on that.
Right.
And then you would have to.
No, we won't. No, we won't. They still stay in that account. And then Eric Walsh told us this at the last meeting.
If they're not in the budget, they're going to stay there.
They stay in the account that they're in. And then when we have a plan to use these ARP budgets.
The ARP money is in its own fund.
Yes.
And whether it's appropriated or not appropriated, it stays in that fund.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so the first thing I'll do is I'll make them.
Permission to spend it without going through the two-month process. So by unappropriating it, if you decide to spend it later on in the year, you will go through the two-month appropriation process to spend it.
Which I'm comfortable with that because we haven't seen any ideas on how y'all are going to spend it.
It was just a suggestion because that's what other cities are doing it, but if you're not comfortable doing it.
Right, other cities have.
And we're not within two months of spending that.
Other cities have a plan.
We're not going to be hardly spending any of it by the end of next year anyway.
Okay, so.
I really don't.
Can I just do that first? Can I make a motion to amend the budget to take the 1.22 million ARP out of the capital outlay? Take it out?
Yes, I I don't see an issue.
I second that.
Go on discussion now? More on discussion, aren't we?
No. Betsy, did you, or Ms. Wolf, did you actually make an actual motion?
Yes. And make it, make it a motion to take out the 1.22 million dollars from the ARP capital outlay fund in the in the budget and put it back in its account? Keep it in its account.
That's all, it goes nowhere. It just.
And we already have a second, so let's take the roll call now, please.
Okay, I beg your pardon.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston.
You guys. I left that police meeting to do a stress test. This is not helping. Thank you. Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
Wall?
Yes.
No, Mayor, that that wasn't for the budget. The budget's still that, it's just making amendment to the.
Okay.
You know what? This isn't fun. I mean, it really isn't fun, but so important. It's the most important thing that as elected officials we can do. It's not only, like I said, numerous, it's not only our duty and what you elected us to do, but it's our obligation to have these uncomfortable and trying and horrible discussions. But it's for the benefit of everyone. And I promise you, as far as I'm concerned, it's just, this is, this is, that's not fun.
It's not fun, but if you have questions, ask questions before we come to the meeting.
You know what?
Not now.
I appreciate you bringing that up because I tried. I had an appointment with Susan and she refused to answer questions. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay, let's point of order. Okay, so let's go.
Let's go on.
Let's go back to, so then if I wanted to do something about the salaries, I could do that on the wage ordinance, just change them on the wage ordinance, so then they'd still be in the budget. And so then they could just be used for, that money could just be used for.
Yes. And it'd be under the civilian wage ordinance and then under the.
Elected officials.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
So on the budget, do you want to move to make a motion to take off some of those vehicles?
Right, I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget to take out the $35,000 for the Building Department truck and to take out.
One at a time.
I'm sorry.
I said it that.
Is this ordinance 27?
One at a time.
I second that.
Well, let's have one person speak, one make a motion, just specify the motion you're dressing.
Was mine clear enough or do you need me to?
You made a whole bunch and she butted in, so let's just.
Is this on ordinance 27?
Yeah.
Yeah, what change? Vehicle?
Yeah, the Building Department vehicle, 35,000.
Misses, remove that.
What was the motion?
Remove the vehicle out of the Building Department.
Okay.
Second it was Kathleen.
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson?
No.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes.
Motion down. Next change.
And the next change would be to amend the budget to take out the $45,000 for the fire chief vehicle.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes.
Motion down. Okay, next one.
Okay, the next one would be to give only three cars instead of four cars to the police. So that would be taking out one vehicle priced at $50,000 from the budget.
I'll second it. Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes. I'll save the salaries for the wage ordinances, but the consultation fees, I recommend that we amend the budget to take the Baker Tilly line item down from $50,000 to $20,000.
Second.
Anderson?
No.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes.
Motion down.
Okay, the last one would be beautification. That fund has is budgeted for $150,000 and I would, since there's only $35,000 spent out of the $485,000 this year, I recommend that we amend the budget to take that number down to $50,000.
Can I ask a question of what that money was for?
That's for your second Saturday and the Fourth of July, $10,000 for that. There's the second Saturday, I'm not sure what all.
How much was spent this year on that so far? 35 so far?
Out of $485,000.
Well, that was overinflated on my mistake last year anyway, so that money's just staying in the bank. We weren't planning on spending it anyway.
Well, then why do we have $150,000 budgeted for it this year? I just recommend that we decrease it to 50.
That's what everybody was saying they might need. This is projection and this is what people are thinking they want and.
Out of 485,000.
Well, that was overinflated on my mistake last year anyway, so that money's just staying in the bank. We weren't planning on spending it anyway.
Well, then why do we have 150,000 budgeted for it this year? I just recommend that we decrease it to 50.
That's what everybody was saying. They might be, this is projection, and this is what people are thinking they want, and.
So you're proposing 50?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I second that, right? Okay, this is Betsy again, and Clotho. Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Anderson, Guston, Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wall?
Yes.
Motion down.
That's it?
That it?
So we're still on the ordinance to prove the budget correct. Mayor?
Yeah.
So we just need to make a motion to adopt it with all those changes? Yes?
Will you tell me what the changes were?
Changes are gonna be one less police car and 50,000 in the seatage.
And ARP money's not in the.
In the ARP. That's something.
Betsy, thank you for suggesting.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 27-2021 as amended?
Two seconds.
Roll call.
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
No.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the next order of business. Ordinance number 20, 2021, an ordinance establishing salaries and wages of civil city employees and appointees for the year 2022. This was discussed in a prior meeting, so I'll now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we consider, ordinance number 2021.
I think it was already considered last time.
I'd like to make those changes to that ordinance involving the salaries, that you said I could.
You need to make a motion to.
Amend?
Discuss it.
Amend.
Discuss.
Consider as discuss.
Make a motion to discuss?
I already did. I made a motion to consider. I just need a second and then roll call.
Second. I'll make a motion to second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wall?
Yes.
You move to make.
Yeah. Well, I would, I would suggest taking out the mayor's secretary. That's $33,944.99. We haven't had a person in that position for almost a year, and I think that that money could be used to help fund other positions.
I would like to discuss that. I think we might have a little bit of a problem in the office upstairs.
What's, what's the problem?
The two people that are running the office right now are not exactly enjoying the.
Who are these two people?
Brenda Douglas and Rebecca Foden. They have other jobs that they are doing, and they're only filling in in the meantime. They are hoping that the mayor, after the budget is over with, will find himself a secretary.
Why hasn't it taken, why has it taken almost a year to find somebody?
It hasn't taken almost a year.
When did Ashley leave?
In April.
May I address?
And.
It's been approximately six months, and in that six months' time, two of the staff have been going back and forth. We have one on vacation now. I've got another one going on sick leave. And so now, among my other duties, I have to go up there and cover as well, or Mr. Bornco does. We have a lot of other duties that are being, I won't say neglected, but we're having to very, be very judicious how we budget our time. It's not something that we can sustain for any given length of time. And we've been doing it, like I said, for about six months, and it's just been an extreme burden. So it's not been a year. It's been, like I say, approximately six months.
Has a position been advertised?
Yes. It has, and I have several applications up there that I've been going through. And after the budget hearings and everything, gonna start with interviews.
I guess we could put it to vote.
Yeah.
We're supposed to put it to vote.
I'll make a motion that we take out the mayor's secretary position out of ordinance number 20.
I second.
No.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
No.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes.
What's the next one?
The next one is I would propose amending the ordinance to take the city attorney from his salary, his, so that he wouldn't get his raise this year, down from $37,256.77 to $36,172.
I second that.
No.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes. I guess the next one would be the building commissioner, who makes $48,175.16 with his new raise. Take that back down to the original salary of this past year, which would be $46,773.
I second that. May I, can I speak?
Anderson?
No.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
Yes.
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes.
I want you to address it in communications, or can I do now?
Yes, if you want to address an issue or question.
Okay. The reason, Mr. Dowd, that I am going to disagree and vote against, because I sent you an email with multiple questions on referring to if you worked with a gentleman, Mr., where's my email? This is it. That's cash flow. And you did not respond pertaining to conflict of interest. Here it is, I beg your pardon, okay. I requested to know if you worked with, no, I sent it to Dustin too. He responded that you didn't know anything. If you worked, are you the property manager for real estate surrounding and/or attached to the Fastenal Building? Were you the property manager of the Fastenal Building owned by Randy Weiss? Are you affiliated and/or work with Randy Weiss? With what properties within Peru, Indiana, do you manage and/or have oversight duties outside of your employment? And you did not respond to anything. That's the reason why I, you know, if you're not gonna respond to emails, you know, and help me understand a possible conflict of interest, then I just can't support any kind of a raise for you. So, that's all I have on that.
Fire chief from the newly proposed 7% raise of $59,196.16 per year, back down to what he made last year, which was $55,448.22.
Second.
Yes.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes.
Got your answer.
Can I say something?
It's after the poll.
Can I? Somebody on the council told me to check with my constituents, and I did. And the people who answered me back told me that they agreed that the fire chief and the police chief should be on the same level. So that is the reason I'm voting the way I am.
What about the money being added to the base pay?
Can you come up here, please?
Yeah.
I asked them the same, I asked them, each of them the same question.
Don Myers, 22-year fireman.
Okay.
Why isn't the same money that there'd be given put on the base pay for the fire, for the new hires? Why is that money being used for them and not the people that be hired?
I'm not sure about that. I will work on that.
Thank you.
Give me time, guys. Give me time. But I did ask the gentleman that I did talk to, and I asked them the same question, and they said that each chief should be on the same level. And as, I have some ideas I'd like to discuss with our mayor.
The gentleman that just asked that question just left the building.
I know, but I'm talking to the other gentleman in the office, in the building. So they may talk to him. But that's all I have to say. And ladies.
That's the next one.
Council, under section 6, can I just notice this? There is two changes that need to be made. The numerical numbers have been changed, however, when it's written out, line number 3, 120 needs to be changed to 60. And then on line 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 240 needs to be changed to 120.
Same line state.
Where is that again, Dustin? Where's that? Dustin, please?
Line number 3 and then line number 6. The numerical number is correct, but the written, or sorry, it's under section 6 of the ordinance.
Section 6. Okay, I'm, I have a, what is that again? I beg your pardon, Dustin?
Under section, section 6, we had made a change, and the numerical number is correct. However, the number that comes immediately before that, where it's written out, needs to be changed, so 120 needs to be changed to 60. And then on line number 6, 240 needs to be changed to 120.
Okay, right, 40, maximum come back, 240.
40, 120.
Can you, would you mind reading what needs to be changed, starting at the first nonexistent place? So we don't have any.
Yes, on paragraph 6, well, section 6 of.
Thank you.
On the wage ordinance, it says, "Non-exempt civil or city employees with the exception of firefighters and police will accumulate one and one-half hours of compensatory time for every hour they work over eight hours in their workday, up to a maximum compensatory time bank of," it should be 60 hours, not 120.
Okay.
Then, "Non-exempt firefighters and police will accumulate compensatory time in lieu of overtime owed in the designated work period at a rate of one and one-half time, or one and one-half hours of compensatory time for every overtime hour worked, up to a maximum compensatory time bank of," should be 120 hours, so 240.
I see it. Are those all the only changes?
That's the only one.
Thank you.
Can you please, if you're gonna talk to him, can you talk on the microphone? Can't sidebar.
I, I can sidebar, but I was telling, there needs to be a motion to make the change.
Entertain a motion for the changes?
I make a motion to make the changes on ordinance 2021.
Second.
For section 6.
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wall?
Yes.
Now, do we make a motion to the top?
Need a vote for approval of ordinance 20, 2021 as amended.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2021.
Second.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clotho?
No.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wall?
No.
Next order of business, ordinance 21-2021, ordinance establishing the 2022 annual salaries of all elected officials of the city of Peru. This was discussed in a previous meeting. Entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we amend ordinance number 21 to reflect the mayor's salary back down to what it was this year, $42,457.63, reflecting no raise.
Second.
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wall?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance number 21, the clerk treasurer, for her salary to go back to what it was this year at $40,315.
Second.
Yes.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
No. The city judge changing that to $13,850, which was her wage in the last budget with no raise. $13,850.
I second that.
I don't think it goes to an actual motion.
Oh, I make the motion to amend ordinance number 21 to reflect the city judges not get a raise and return to the salary of 2,021, which is $13,850.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
No.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Saad Ashani?
No.
And Wall?
Yes.
So if I understand correctly, the mayor's was amended?
I believe so.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Now I need a motion to approve ordinance 21-2021.
So moved.
Second.
I heard two. Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Russell?
No.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wolf?
No.
Moving right on. Under new business. City of Peru Common Council ordinance 23-2021, and ordinance to amend ordinance 11 of 2012.
I make a motion to consider ordinance 232021.
I'll entertain a motion to consider.
Pat made the motion. Did she?
Yes, she did.
Anybody? Mark, you second. Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to adopt.
Are we going to consider putting some sort of rules in place of what we're going to allow to be taken out with Adam's guidance on that, so we don't end up with a mess in Peru?
That's why I suggested that the ordinance committee get together with Adam and even the mayor, if that's necessary, to have this ordinance, to create an ordinance or amend one to help make the parameters. You want to come on up? So in between now and next month, we could work together to amend it, to make, to amend the ordinance to be beneficial for everybody.
Yep, absolutely. If that's what you guys want to do, that's fine.
I just wouldn't want to open the door saying we're going to pick up everything without some sort of guidelines, and then we've got it in place, and we made a motion to accept
It helps us to, you know, when people call in and say, why don't you do this? If I have an ordinance that I can go back on.
And look at the list and go down it.
It helps.
Molnax had pointed out something on the, you know, that's already in an ordinance. Maybe we need to fix that and remove the refrigerators and stuff and that $40 fee that he said is in there.
Right.
There's also been.
Maybe if we tabled this and then get some more detail on it and then bring it back?
Steve, there's also been, in other places, days that they put them out.
Right, yeah, and we still have our beautification days through our solid waste.
I mean, there's been certain days that they set aside for, you know, you put your mattress out on a certain day, or you put your table.
And I think something like that will definitely help control it so they're not just there all the time.
Yeah.
Pick certain days of the week or the month or whatever.
Normally on trash pickup day.
Yeah, normally it would just be on the.
On their schedule?
Yeah, because they're going through there anyways, getting their garbage, and it just thrown all.
I'd just feel more comfortable if we had a little more of a guideline, something that you can work on as well.
I agree, that would help us too, like I said, to fall back on if, you know, anybody has any questions or anything.
Because you need a special truck to pick it up?
No, just use a garbage truck.
A garbage truck would do it?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we table ordinance number 23.
Second.
How would you feel about that, Adam? If we table it?
He just said it was.
No, that, yeah, as long as, as long as we can get something set before, you know, you're the guy dealing with it. Yeah, absolutely. So if you guys want to table it, tell next, next meeting, that's fine.
And we can get on it immediately, so we have plenty of time to get it taken care of. We don't want to wait till the day before next meeting.
Yeah, the ordinance committee, Steve, Betsy and I, so we can get with you.
Okay.
We got you, Adam.
Thank you.
Wait, we, do we need a vote on the table?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
All right. Moving on. City of Peru Common Council ordinance 24-2021, and ordinance to repeal ordinance 29-260, 2016. I will entertain a motion to consider.
I make a motion to consider ordinance 242021.
I would just note that this is the large item pickup fee, well, ticket fee, so connected to the last.
So we need to table this one as well?
Most likely.
I'll make a motion that we table ordinance number 242021.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Resolution number 142021.
Wasn't that supposed to be taken off?
I was getting ready to comment.
Okay.
That I had an email from Brick Robinson this morning, and she wished to continue this until November because she has answered or got a lot of questions from council. And she prefers to have it removed for discussion tonight.
I'm looking to remove it from the agenda.
If there's no objections, this will be removed per Homestead Barnes' request.
Should we, do we need a vote to have it removed, or?
Yeah, a motion to amend the agenda, to remove it from the agenda.
I make a motion to remove it, amend, remove it definitely agenda.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashani?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
Moving right along. Patrick Comford, on behalf of the Peru Firefighters Local 383, would like to speak on the union's behalf.
I believe Nathan Hunt already did that on his behalf earlier, unless, Nathan, do you have anything else?
If he has anything else.
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay.
Moving on. Tricia Russell, on behalf of herself, wants to address the accusations of impeachment by Ellen Tord, Betsy Edwards-Wolff.
Yes, I do. I wanted to address the accusation that has been circulating that I wanted to impeach Councilwoman Will Smith. The first definition in the dictionary of the impeachment is to charge with a crime or misdemeanor. According to ordinance 31.16, President Pro Tempore, a president pro tempore of the council shall be selected from the council's membership at the first regular meeting beginning each year in accordance with IC 34-4-6-8B. I contacted our city attorney to inquire if I could request a vote before the year was up. He told me I could, but advised me to think it through. I decided to get advice from two people. They both were older and wiser than me. I took their advice and decided not to request the vote. My reasons for doing so? In the month of August, Dr. Jason Gortow from Custom Training Solutions LLC gave a presentation and offered his services to the council because he felt we needed help. He is a leadership training specialist. He noticed that we didn't always work well together, and things have not been getting better. I want to say I enjoy being a member of the council, but that meeting was overwhelming for me. I do not want to go into specifics or dredge up bad memories about the meeting. The meetings are on YouTube and open to the public for all to watch. That was the end of my involvement in this matter, and that's all I want to say.
All right. Anything else? We're up for communication. Anything from the city attorney?
Nothing at this time.
I don't have anything, Susan. Do you have anything? Council gave their liaison reports. Anybody have anything else?
I just have a question for Susan. We've been hearing a rumor that you're going to resign. Is there, at the end of the year, is there any truth to that?
Nope.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, I just, we've just heard that rumor, so just wanted to get that verification.
Anything from the audience? Any questions? Come on up.
I'm one of Johnson Theory of Five, and I had written an email and had asked to be on the agenda tonight, and I thought that was confirmed. Maybe I misunderstood. Help me out here. When would be a good time to probably come back? Late tonight? I was here June 7th and discussed our program and said that I would be back seeking funds. It sounds like you're really tight, but I still have to do my due justice because one client, potential client we have, has had 21 police calls on her in a short time. So there is a smittance of hope and a silver lining that if you help us in turn, it will come back to you two and three and fourfold. So I, before leaving, I just wondered, since I didn't understand when was proper to be here, I would like to know when to come back, as I told you Tuesday.
We have a paper that Susan fills out to put you on the agenda.
Okay.
And we can do that next month.
Okay.
And get you on the agenda.
The first Monday in November?
Yes.
That'd be awesome.
Linda, your efforts are appreciated.
Thank you. I appreciate your note as well. And this is, I don't want to take away from what you need to do for your city. It's admirable that you're all here doing that, but I only want to help in a little corner of it, too. So I'll be back the first Monday in November. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from Wayne?
Last week, when I addressed the council about longevity versus matrix, and I said perhaps 1% longevity would be effective without running the cost thoroughly through last week, I ran it through in the past couple of weeks, and the 1% incentive is almost cost comparable to the matrix system. The difference is, is a five-year person on the incentive pay would make about $2,400 extra a year, and in the matrix system, I think it was 400 and some, I'm not sure, 400, 800. So, and plus the people over 20 years would also then be getting an incentive pay. So if we're having trouble keeping police officers and fire officers, and I was a firefighter for eight and a half year, 18 and a half year or so, I've been on all sides of these issues. If we want to keep our personnel, we need to find incentives to keep them here when they first get hired, so that we don't train them and go to that, you know, expense and have them just go to some other town. And then, you know, we pay the training expense and we get to start all over again. We need to reward the younger ones, and we need to do something to try to keep the older ones here with the experience level. Because when I went through the number of people with the number of years, we're really, we really have young staffs on the police department and the fire department, which can create perhaps issues down the road. Number two, as most of you know, I was a, I was a chief financial officer of schools, and I was also on the school board, so I've been on both sides of that issue. I've been where you sit, and I've been basically where Miles sat, trying to present numbers. I did the calculations for the wages and all of that type of stuff. Doc did the calculations for the capital projects and the, and the supplies and things like that. The problem with salaries is, is it's exponential. If we give 5% this year, you're like 6%, you gave last year. When you give the 3% this year, it makes last year's raise 6.18. So it gets exponential. The problem we have in this community is, and I've been following this for a number of years, and you guys know it, is that our assessed values are not increasing very fast. Matter of fact, if you go in and analyze assessed values, the 3%, which is commercial, and the 2%, which is rentals, are basically flat or going negative. The only thing going up right now is the 1%, which is the homeowners. And the reason that's going up is because they're buying, those home prices are going up, which is really benefiting me personally right now, because home prices are going up. So when we look at that, and we're looking at future revenue increases, we have to look about what's actually going into our community, because we can't guarantee something five years from now, that perhaps when the bubble breaks, that we won't be able to fund that. And then you get to make really difficult choices about what do you do then? And that's no fun. And the other thing, what Eric brought up, was there's only three ways you can finance major equipment. And that would be the street department with their beverage trucks, and the fire department with their arrows and their pumpers, because that's a lot of money. You can finance it either through putting a certain amount of budget, let's say, when we was at the, when I was at the schools, if we wanted to put a roof on a school, and we knew it was going to last 15 years, and it's going to cost 500,000, we basically put back $35,000 a year, and then you encumber it forward. It looks like you've got a lot of money setting in a fund, but you really don't, because at some point, you have to spend that on that roof. Or you can lease, which then you're paying finance charges, or you can just go out and borrow the money to buy it. But when you borrow money to buy something in a government unit, it affects your total borrowing ability, because the state restricts you to the percentage of your values that you can borrow. So you don't ever want to borrow if you don't have to, because you want that emergency borrowing ability for the most part. So that was really about all I had to say. It's just that unfortunately, Peru just doesn't have a good assessed values right now. We don't have a good income, and the only way you pay for our bills are fees, which you just raised the trash fee $3, which was.
We did, we tabled that.
Oh, you did?
We tabled that. We tabled it.
I'm not for the trash fee, but I told Adam, you know, that's the only way we can pay for it. That's what it takes to pay for it. That's what you have to do. I mean, it's a decision, because you have to pay the workers and you have to pay the disposal costs, extra two choices. Okay? Or you have to raise, or you have to increase your assessed value. And I know one business in Peru right now, they had their assessed value cut $1 million next year. So that's going to hit the bottom line right on your budget, 1 million bucks in one year. And then, or you, or low it, which is your income, and we have a fairly low income, and that's not improving either. So between those three revenue streams, that's all, that's all the administration can work with, and that's all you guys can work with. Your hands are tied. And wages are usually about probably 85% of the budget. Does anybody know? Do you know? 85, 90% of budget? One of the school teachers were 62% of the budget, and then we had the other stuff. So your hands are tied. You only have very few things that you can adjust in reality, and, and everybody wants a raise. And I, you know, I wanted to raise when I was in the fire department, I was on the wage committee. But the other side is, is that how do we manage it within our community? Because we haven't went back as far as some other communities, but if we hit a roadblock down the road here, then the decisions really get hard. And, you know, and I like to see everybody get a raise. That's all. I hope it was a little informative, because I'm not on either side. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, can?
No, go ahead.
Stephanie Graff.
Come up here, please.
Could you step up?
Hi, y'all. I'll keep it real quick. I said what I said at the last meeting, I stand behind it. I think you've set a horrible precedent today by saying vehicles are more important than our fire department and our police department. If my house catches on fire, I'm not calling the mayor, I'm not calling the clerk treasurer, I'm not calling Pookie and Ray Ray, I'm calling the fire department. And I think it is a travesty that if we're saying that we need to look at fringes for people, people don't live off fringes. I'm very disappointed. I think today is a grounds for consideration of a vote of no confidence, and that's what I will take to the people that I talk to. I am in your area. You didn't ask me about it. Had I been asked about it, I would have said that this was bad business. I spent the last 15 years in Washington, and I know that leadership comes from taking care of the people that work for you. You didn't do that today, and I'm very disappointed.
Joe?
We've been noticing a trend in this town. People have actually come up and talked to me. I was out to dinner the other night. Two people talked to me about the way these meetings are conducted and the way you guys are all getting along between the administration and the council. When the other person talked to me, goes, I don't even live in this town, and we've heard about what this is going on. They're talking about it at lunchtime at the school district and all that. This council and this administration need to work together. When you have questions, they need to be answered. But you need to think about the questions before you get them. When you're just taking a whole bunch of stuff and throwing it at people, mostly to confuse them, that's not helping any. We need to get the city to work together. This city depends on what happens here, and if we're not all working together for it, we're not going to get any further forward. Each and every one of you, when you made your campaign speeches and all that, were for the betterment, betterment of this city. I have not seen it in 22 months. These meetings are still not being run correctly, we're still not getting things done like they're supposed to be done. 22 months. If you don't know what you're supposed to be doing, there's plenty of pamphlets out there and stuff to figure it out. If you have individual problems with people, you talk to them and you work it out the best you can, but we cannot keep going like this. Talk about economic development. If I was somebody that's coming in here to build a, start a business or something, and I saw how this was run, I wouldn't do it. I'd go someplace else. We need to be more respectful of each other, and we need to get the job done, that's what each and every one of you was elected to do. So please, I hope this is the last time we see something like this and we actually start moving forward in these meetings. Thank you very much.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience?
If not, we're up for. I just want to finalize, I, this, being a city councilwoman is the honor of my life, so thank you.
Okay, we're up for a motion. Second?
Second.
Bro call.
I'll say. We just normally all say aye when we want to adjourn, we don't have to do a bro call for that. Aye.
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 Captain.